Good evening, welcome to the City Council Meeting of December 21st, 2015. If you'd stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call upon the Clerk for the roll call.
Councilmember Elta?
Here.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember T. Lander?
Here.
And Mayor Hages?
Here. Thank you.
Item two is the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Moving on to the minutes of our December 7th meeting. I've opened the packet for our review and there was one correction that's been circulated the last page and that's been fixed. Any questions or concerns about the minutes? Is motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as adapted there. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Let's see, approval of the accounts payable. Once again, item four in our packet there for our review. Any questions or concerns with the bills for the last two weeks?
I'll make a motion to, what are we doing, approving it? I'll approve the, the-
The accounts payable as presented.
Thank you, Jim. Accounts payable as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve the accounts payable as it's presented. For this, we need a roll call vote, so I'll call upon the Clerk.
Councilmember Elta?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember T. Lander?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Thank you. Item five is citizen comments. For any items that do not appear on our agenda, and I hope you can read that, but we, any citizen that would like to address the council, this would be the time to do so. We'd ask that you step to the podium and state your name and keep your comments to about five minutes. And say nothing more than once.
We'll move on then to item six, our old business. So we've got four different things. We'll begin with the strategic plan report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The only item I have under strategic goals is a street asset management plan. Ron Wood's over the last month or more, I think, has been putting together a draft of that. And we sat down last week and wrote that draft and we still have a lot of other numbers to work on and some graphs and stuff that's part of the template for that. But we are moving forward on it and there will be a point in time where we'll come to you, we'll give you an overview of street asset management with plans on why we're doing it and all that, but just want to give you an update on the street asset management plan. And that's all I have under strategic goals.
Okay. Pending council projects report.
Nothing further to update you there.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on to boards and commissions, an item that requested to be added to the agenda at our last meeting. So we'll begin with that. Airport Board, anyone have anything to report there?
I just have to report that we've got to bring a new airport review to confirm the content.
All right. Does it need workout?
Yep. I think it's, I think it's all right here in the back.
Okay.
That we have to, that we have to do. The person that we approved the contract for before has decided to not follow this note for the airport. So we have to second that and we have to bring that back in the council. That's all I have for that.
All right. Anything else for the Airport Board? Arbor Board? Board of Review?
Yep. Nothing.
Okay. And Construction Board of Appeals? Downtown Development Authority?
Meaning?
All right. Downtown Historic District Commission? Lowell Cable TV Endowment Board? They met a month or so ago. There's been a meeting since then, there's been a report, so-
Notice that they're going out really soon on the grant process.
All right. Very good. And that will be coming up in the next couple of months. Anytime now, in the next few months, a few, well, actually, a couple of days, you can start sending in ad applications and we'll add more information in the future as to the due date, but that's out there a little ways yet. Lowell Light and Power Board, if you'd like, I attended the meeting back last week on December 10th and the Washington DC APPA Legislative Rally is coming up in March and anyone that's interested in attending should contact Sharon at Lowell Light and Power, let her know if you're interested. The biodigestor process upgrades are now complete and the potential for older issues is greatly decreased, not quite there yet, but greatly decreased, and we're almost there. Greg Northrup still plans to declare full commercial operations any day now, really darn soon, so then Lowell Light and Power can start collecting some, some real red from them, something like that. We're continuing on the installation of the Rolls Royce turbine and we're on track on getting it to run in 2016, so that's, that's right on goal. And tours have been given to all of the council members as they do stand with Mr. Pierce and so we should all be part of them, enlightened as to how Light and Power operates. So thank you, Mr. Pierce, for guiding us through, through that process. Anything else, any questions or concerns moving forward with Lowell Light and Power? Local Officers Compensation Commission? I don't think we'd have anything going on there. Look Memorial Fund, I have a pass out that got a couple of highlights in yellow and orange as to the grant process that was done back on Wednesday, November 18th. As you can see, there were four applicants that received funds, one did not, totaling fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars of the fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars available, moving forward with a balance then of six hundred and ninety-one dollars. The recipients were the First Baptist Church of Lowell for one thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars, for the AED machines to have that in their new facility. Lowell Chamber of Commerce Foundation received four thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars for promoting the Sizzling Summer Concert Series as well as upgrading the sound system that they use. The Lowell Fire and Emergency Service Authority received four thousand dollars for personnel safety items for 28 members, for forcible entry tools for the three pumper. And then Lowell Area Historical Museum, five thousand dollars towards upgrading their computer system for artifact and document collections. That will be website available and so we look forward to seeing that in the near future. The Arbor Board did not receive three hundred thousand dollar request for trees and thus bringing all of the others in line to receive grants and thank you for the Arbor Board for their understanding, but there were just so many funds available and that's what was dispersed at the Wednesday, November 18th meeting of the Look Memorial Fund. Any questions or concerns? Okay. Moving on then to Lowell Area Fire and Emergency Services Authority?
Nothing new really to report. We're having a meeting on the first week of January to go over the fire chiefs' job description because we don't really have one. And so then we will, are going to put it up for hire. We're going to put it out where everyone can put in an application, one round, anyone and everyone, and go from there.
Okay. As we know, Frank Martin has decided to retire at the end of January, so we're at the process, the Fire Board of Fire Emergency Services Authority, excuse me?
Lowell Fire and Emergency Services Authority.
But of seeking a new fire chief for that position, so good luck, Jeff, with that. Get the right person.
Well, I'm going to, after, as the project, process progresses, I'm going to ask for general direction from the council on, you know, some, some of that, so. And we are updating our, I just about forgot about that. We are updating our rules and our procedures and all that and Sue's going to try to get us a redlined copy so we can have it for the next meeting.
All right.
It didn't, it didn't come out redlined on my computer, so I think it's in there, but anyways, we'll go from, we'll get with you next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to Lowell Area Recreation Authority, anything new there? Parks and Recreation Commission?
We've canceled the meeting.
Well, just so you know, on Parks and Rec, we've been working on leases, sports leases are coming up and we have some direction from Parks and Rec on which way to go for those leases we come up with in the near future.
All right. And Planning Commission?
I attended the Planning Commission and we talked a little bit about the Greenwich Gravel Project. And if you don't know, there's a, on the corner of Bowes Road, there's some signages out there that talk about it's owned by the gravel company. They want to do a little mining, which pretty much means, I think, gravel and sand and maybe eventually put a lake and development up there, but there's a lot to do before that, so I think we have a decision coming next spring that will probably come to the council. Planning Commission, what a wonderful group. They, they really run a nice meeting and they're very sharp, so other than that, I don't have much.
Okay. Thank you. And the Lowell Labor, Lowell Area Chamber of Commerce, had a chance to meet back December 8th and the new president next year, starting in January, will be Stacy Chambers of the YMCA and she will succeed Cliff Jacobschich. And Cliff has done a terrific job and John Jacobs is also going off the board with, with Cliff. They need to take one year off, so we'll look forward to welcoming a couple of new members to the Chamber of Commerce Board. The merchants meeting back on the first Tuesday of the month discussed Lowell bucks and the experience of having a soft start with those Lowell bucks. Black Friday in Lowell was a pretty good success. It's always busy early and busy late, kind of dry in the middle, awful, awful light as people head off to, to the big city. The annual dinner will be on February 25th at the Grand Volute. They will celebrate various businesses within our community as well as a Person of the Year, but the businesses have been selected. I'm not at any liberty to divulge who those would be just yet, but it will be special to celebrate the success of our community with these various businesses that help make our community as special as it is. And the expo is coming up on, save the date, March 26th. That's the Saturday, right in the middle of Good Friday and Easter, Easter weekend, so things will be happening at the high school. So looking forward to all of that and all the great work that Liz and the Chamber of Commerce does for our community. And with that, are there any other boards, commissions, or other reports that we are All right. We'll move on then to item D, Lowell Light and Power Budget Amendment. This came before us last meeting and we tabled it to this meeting, so I don't know where we're going to begin.
I'll, I'll start. I procedurally, this will be an interesting question, we'll get into council along, along the, to a date certain. I'm not sure that it requires a motion to remove it from the table, but you certainly would be covering yourselves if you did, so you might want to run a motion to remove this item from the table.
If you'd like to discuss this, I would entertain a motion to move this item from the table to our discussion now.
I'll make a motion to remove this item from the table and, is that good?
You can second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
Order one, and so we will proceed. Mr. House?
No, it's on the table. You wanted a table to give council members an opportunity to tour the Light and Power facilities. I believe that that's occurred and so now the amendment is just before you for consideration. Maybe to review, what the amendment does is it basically adds a proposed capital budget to the cash generated from operating activities, a proposed capital budget of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. And we've got Mr. Pierce, as well as Mr. Dr. Sloof. Am I right? Did I get it, Steve?
Got it, Steve. Here to answer all those financial questions and, are there any questions or concerns that we would have about the proposed budget that they have brought before us?
Who wants to go first? Anybody?
Go ahead.
I have a couple of concerns. I think Lowell Light and Power, if you get to know what they're trying to do and, and their, their goals, they're a very forward-thinking group and there's a lot going on that I'm hoping, I talked to Greg Pierce a little bit today, I think what needs to be put out there is all of, all of this forward thinking, all the ideas that they have, all the, the processes that are in motion. One of the criticisms I have is, is a, it seems like there's a little bit of a management issue in this, this budget was approved by the previous council, but something was left out and it took six months to discover that. And it pretty much took the new council members to identify it. That, to me, shouldn't ever have happened. And I don't know if you have an explanation or want it or not, but I think, I think things kind of just flowed through real, real quick and easy. The biodigestor seemed like it took a real short time to get it up and running and everything was put in. I think it's very forward-thinking. Greg told me that we're in the twenty, what'd you say, twenty-two, twenty-four percent range, meeting the EPA standards for renewable, thank you, Jeff, thank you. So with that, I think we're on the right track and there's some things that the guys and I keyed on. My first thought, we went into the new generation room and I saw the new generator up. It looks nice and clean in there and then, then Greg told me about this wide open space to the north of the building where they could add a steam generator that would feed off of the heat created by the two other generators when they're up and running. That's a pretty cool thought because that's thirty-three and a third percent free energy because it should be able to push out close to, or maybe a little bit more, energy than the two generators are making. That one, to me, seems like it ought to be a priority. I, I, the second priority would be to get gas to that facility. I, I know you're at the mercy of consumers' energy, but I would appreciate if that was pushed forward, if you could do anything to get consumers to get the kind of fuel that you need. I, I like the numbers as far as how much energy can be created with those generators, how cheaply it could be created, and I think we live in a day and age when, and we're going to talk about in a little bit, with the smart meter, it's not a problem, but it's a smart meter thought that we have to deal with. Our country has been under attack and just this morning I saw on the news that New York Dam had been breached by an Iranian hacker. And if anybody knows me, I have websites and I've been hacked a couple of times and I've lost my sites for a few days. We can't afford to lose our power for a few days. So having this third steam generator seems to me like a wise thing because it'll be a backup for us. And I think, I think I'm pretty much closing in on my thoughts that I wanted to talk about tonight, but I welcome Light and Power to step up and answer any of my questions or, I know we, we had some really good discussions today, so you guys all went through the plant too. I'm sure you guys had something to say.
I'll have a conversation here today.
Oh, thank you.
Sure person to conduct the meeting, but anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have any questions you wanted Mr. Pierce to?
No.
Take care of?
Okay. Did you want to?
No, I was, I was just going to explain that in the past, for our budget submission, it inevitably brought to our attention that the capital expenses needed to be included. So it wasn't that we didn't include something that should have been there and missed it, we just didn't know that it was supposed to be there. And so it then came to our attention that it should be, and so now we're trying to get it included.
And can I talk to you?
Yes, sir.
And it will be included from here on? And my thinking is the previous council approved this budget.
Right.
Whether that was in or out, it was still approved. And my inclination is to say, yes, we need to keep moving forward in that, that area.
Okay. And I can't, another explanation might be that it hadn't been done that way for a long while anyway. I can't say forever, but for a darn long while, so just, just, just an error that continued to progress until now, so.
Well, I've had my, I've had my disagreements with the previous council, but I think we need to honor the work that they did. I think we need to honor the contracts that were put in place before we came here, so that's just my feelings on that.
Okay. Anybody else thought there were?
Well, I saw, I checked out the Lowell Light and Power news and, by the way, I was impressed too and I agree with Alan. I like that forward thinking and I'm excited for the boiler as well, you know, to take that wasted energy and make it positive. But I noticed on your March 6th, 2014, that you said one of the combustible turbines is fully installed and ready to operate for the 2014 peak season.
Mm-hmm.
And then the second turbine should be ready to operate during the 2015 peak season.
Right.
So I'm assuming we didn't meet the 2015 peak season?
No, we didn't.
Then how often was the one turbine run for the 2014 peak season?
I think for the 2014 season, we ran three or four times and then for the 2015 season, we ran maybe twice, five to seven times in any.
So when we have them both fully operational, will they be double that or?
Yes. Whatever the volume is, it would be doubled because they're both the same size.
Okay. Yes.
I'm issue with the smart meters. Is there a reason that we need to do them all at one time? I would assume that around town, there are meters in different, you know, page brackets. Obviously, Whispering Hills is going to have newer meters than the historical district. And is there, none of the stuff I've seen shows any benefit to the ratepayers. I don't think you guys explained enough how all this forward thinking is going to save the ratepayers money because I think at the end of the day, that's what they want to know about.
Right. And, and, you know, we are non-profit, we're here to, to serve our customers and so our, our thinking is always in how we can best do that and save our customers money or at least keep from having to increase expenses to our customers. The return on investment pro forma for the smart meters shows that the payback period is three years. The plan that we have been given by the vendor that we selected is for a three-year installation, or not, sorry, not three-year installation, but three-year payment period. Our payment would be about a hundred and seventy thousand a year for three years and the return on investment has been projected to be about a hundred and seventy thousand a year for three years. So really, it pays for itself instantly, but in terms of the total project, it's a three-year payback. We just don't have to pay it all at the same time. There are a lot of benefits to the customer. Not only is it a, a new meter and a meter that will give them the ability to get all kinds of additional information with which to manage their electric and their utility bills and usage at their home, but it provides us much better information for outage management in the future and it's really the way the industry is going. If this is something that we ended up not doing, we'd be behind the goal. We also, you may not know, we did a pilot on this three years ago and we have two hundred and some meters installed in Lowell already that are, that are these advanced metering technology and they're all Whispering Hills at this point and a few commercial meters down in the, in the commercial area by Myers and coming east on Main Street and they've been very successful. So what we want to do is get all of the system, the new meters, so that we can take advantage of all of the opportunities that enforce not only us as a utility, but the customers as well.
That is your, sorry, finish?
Yeah.
Jeff, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Alex?
I do. In 2011, California came up with a rule that protected the property owners' rights regarding any leakage of information as far as the smart meter can, can, if you buy a TV, it's possible that it'll have an RFID tag in it and the smart meter in California, they thought could, could read the RFID tag. And so they enacted a law to protect the consumer. Is there anything in Michigan that protects the consumer and something like that?
The, the main thing that protects the consumer in Michigan is the fact that in most utilities that are installed in Michigan, there's the opt-out provision. And we at Lowell Light and Power would fully intend to have an opt-out provision for any customer that doesn't want to have the smart meter.
And that will be at no cost?
And that's at no cost.
Okay. I, I asked you earlier about having, if too many people opt out, how does that hurt, what you're trying to do?
In all of our review, and again, we've been working on this for three years, we can't in our wildest dreams imagine there's going to be more than one percent that would, that would choose to opt out. We haven't seen any industry statistics anywhere in the country that's greater than that. And one percent of our customers would be twenty and that's not significant to make a difference in whether the project is applied.
Okay. On the plus side for the consumer, there'll be options for them to be able to log into their account and see where their peak usage are, what, what times of day is its peak and monitor, okay, I've used this many kilowatts this week or this month and, and it, does it give a real-time running tabulation of what the bill's going to be too?
Yes. It gives us the opportunity in the future to develop what's called a time of use rate. And I think a time of use rate is a great benefit for the community. You want to use your peak electricity in your home in the middle of the night and it's cheaper for us to get energy in the middle of the night, then we can give you a cheaper rate for the middle of the night.
So I could run my electric dryer at night and save a little bit? Okay.
Absolutely. Steve, is there anything you want to add? I mean, Steve's the one that's managing the project, so to speak, and there are really a lot of advantages for both the utility and the consumer, so.
I have been working on the project extensively since this past April or May and I do have some key benefits to the customer. We would have a platform that would allow all residents, businesses to log in via their smartphone with an app or on the computer to monitor their kilowatt hour usage by hour, day, year. They can get alerts in terms of budget amounts. If they want to have a budget of seventy-five dollars for electricity for a month, they can get a text alert when they're at fifty percent of that budget and what they're projected to use in the month. They can report and view outages in real time. We'll be able to see outages in real time and respond quicker. They can receive notifications via text, email regarding if their power's out, their bill. They can receive an e-bill. They'll be able to submit service requests via their mobile app or the computer instead of having to call in. They can compare usages, their usage with other homes of similar size. They can get energy efficiency advice, saving tips. And like Greg said, we'd have the ability to someday implement time of use rates or even prepaid metering.
Prepaid?
Prepaid metering is the idea that people would buy power before they use it, so you would take your fixed costs and just for a quick example, let's say the fixed cost for power is thirty dollars in a month. Every day, their balance would be reduced by one dollar for the fixed cost and the meter would read at the same time every night to determine the variable cost of their power in that day. So the fixed cost and the variable cost would be deducted from their balance and they can get alerts saying you have fifteen dollars left worth of power and this fifteen dollars would give you power for the next six and a half days. They could log onto their phone or the computer and add money, which would give them more power. power. And it's shown that people with prepaid metering use actually 30% less power just because of the psychology of electricity. It's more like gasoline now, where, you know, hey, I just bought this power, let's shut off the lights, let's do things efficiently. Does that make sense?
It does, but it's also kind of scary.
Yeah, that would be something, that would be something in the future that would be something that would happen right away with AMI.
Okay. At the last council meeting, I wanted to mention to folks that if you take five incandescent bulbs into Lowell Lake Power, they'll give you five LEDs of the 60-watt equivalent. Just turn them in and you walk out of there with five of those, and that will help your bill. Because you're running with, what, 6, 70 watts of power instead of 60. So you do that five times and you're going to save a bit.
Jeff?
Can I ask you a question? Why is he smart here?
You gave a long list of benefits that these smart meters are going to provide for the consumer. Is there something in your plan that educates the people? We've been, I mean, in three years, I haven't heard about the smart meter project, and I'm a customer. So, I mean, are you doing something to educate the customer on how to use the app, and how to use the computer, and how to use the online bill pay? Is that involved in your plan? It would be. The total implementation period that Eden Cooper, the vendor, proposed is 20 weeks. And to get the mobile application up and running is 12 to 16 weeks. In that time, we've brainstormed whether we would need bill stuffers, or if we'd need town hall meetings, or sending out individual letters to customers saying, this is what the plan is, here's your chance to opt out. If you do opt in, here are some of the cool features where you can get involved and if you want to manage your power and take just more control. So there would be that plan, but I agree, we haven't done much to educate the public.
Jeff?
Go ahead.
I study marketing, and one of the things that, I don't want to be your customer. I want to be your client. And there's a difference. A client is somebody you watch over and nurture and take care of. A customer is somebody you typically sell to one time and then you're done. And I would hope that you would change your philosophy on how you treat the people who write the checks to Lowell Lake Power. And that would include pushing out more information, because most of it's positive. Push it out there and let them know what you're doing, what your forward thinking is, what your goals are. And I know you have a $3,000 debt that you're paying off for the substation out behind Walgreens, and, or $3 million, I'm sorry. And that's going to be paid off in 2027. So at some point, if that's going to lessen your overhead, will that come in and help your clients to have lower bills? Is that a goal? And if so, express it, so that we know.
Anything else?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
All right.
Okay, as Alan said, there are a lot of threats out there. What is in place and what are you planning? If the power, if the transmission line went down today, what percentage of Lowell could you power today? Right now? If the lights went out right now, what could you do in Lowell for the citizens right now?
We could keep the lights on for minimum service. We have about five megawatts of generation that we could have up and running today.
Right this way. Right this way. Okay. Because that's one of the biggest concerns is backup. I know that the engines were built for, or were purchased for peak power, but things do happen. And we just basically want to know that at least the lights can stay on.
When the second combustion turbine is on, then we'll have over eight and a half, which should keep the base on.
Yeah, because there's a lot of people in town with backup generators that could be put on to Lowell Lake.
Absolutely.
Everyone good with these questions so far? What the topic before us is the budget amendment, including these capital funds. And so it's this capital budget, which tags along with the budget that was passed back in May. So I think that's what we're looking at here. Is there any discussion about that?
Like I said before, I think we need to honor the previous council's vote and thoughts on this budget. I welcome any further discussion from anybody else, but I think a contract is a contract and a vote is a vote on the council. They studied it back then. And now it's up to us to carry that on through. And I think in the light of only being able to turn the lights on right now, if we don't push this through quickly and they don't get on their job, we're at the mercy of an event.
Any other comments? Is that a motion to approve the budget amendment?
It wasn't going to be.
Would you like it to be?
No, I'd like to have one of the other people make that motion.
Would someone like to do that?
Further discussion?
That would be my job, but further discussion?
Any thoughts? Sorry, Joe.
Yeah, quite all right. Yeah, thank you.
Now, we have to protect our citizens. I think that we need to consider approving this. And whether there was a failure in how, and when, and where, we still ultimately are responsible to the people that we report to. We don't, they don't report to us, we report to them. We have to do what's in their best interest. And that's kind of the way I feel about that. So if you want to argue, you have to argue, because if you vote no and you don't argue, I don't want to accept that.
Well, nor do I, but for further clarification, if you'd like to make a motion, I'll make a second, and then we can have further discussion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
I have a second motion. Now we'll open up for any discussion. Any discussion?
Well, I would just like to know, when will this second generator be up and running to give us that security we need for the community and the citizens?
Well, the plan right now is to have it up and running in 2016. So.
They're on plan.
We're six weeks behind now because we've been going through this process of trying to get this approved. So we've got things that we need to move on.
Point is, if they can't buy anything without approval of this budget, so they're not buying anything to make it all happen.
Well, I understand that, but it was already stated in their newsletter and in their blog that the one was up in 2014 and then that one would be up running now. But what you're saying with this mishap?
No, we postponed the eventual getting it up and running to be able to focus on the biodigester. When that budget was made, when that newsletter went out, we hadn't received the go-ahead on the biodigester yet. So when that happened, we decided we needed deferred funds to get the biodigester up and running and put that second turbine on the back burner for a year. So instead of being up in 2015, it's now going to be up in 2016. That was the reason.
They changed the plan.
But you know what? That would have been great to have the citizens know that that was the plan, because I didn't know it either. And like, you know, communication, getting that information out there to all of us, so that we know that that's the plan now. But if we were to have both of those running, we'd have a lot more stability in our community though.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
I've always had a problem with the biodigester in theory. I love the fact that we have a biodigester. I don't love where it is. I think the priority should have been to give all the power to the people that by having the two up and running, maybe before the biodigester. I know we put a chunk of change into the biodigester, into the facility and the surrounding areas and getting it ready. And I'm not going to say that number. If you want to, you can. But it seems to me that if you have two natural gas generators running and it fills a third, and it pushes up into the 12-megawatt area, we can do pretty good. And to me, that should have been first priority.
The biodigester is much more cost-effective?
Well, it is and it isn't, because we don't own it, but we put a lot of money into it, and it has its issues. And last week, a sign was put up on the door that I understand talks about gas, a poisonous gas. Is that true?
There's no poisonous gas, there are no.
Then why was that sign put up?
There, if there was a release, there'd be a potential, but we have monitors in the building, and there is no, I mean, OSHA's been in there and checked it. There is no poisonous gas in the facility.
Okay, then the sign should have said, in the event of a release, poisonous gas can be issued. So I don't know where that came from, but it's there.
I'll check into it.
Yeah, okay. Because it's a cause for concern, and the word gets around town, and people talk about it, and you don't look good. And we want you to start looking good. Because I think ultimately, with all the vision that you have, you're trying to do what's best for the people. It's just misinformation and misunderstandings. And I think it's time for all of that to change. And I know you can do it.
Absolutely.
Did you want to talk maybe a little bit, Greg, about the construction of the biodigester and the tax credits from the federal government? There was a timetable that I think precipitated the quick start of that project.
Right, once the biodigester, once a developer came forward and funded for it, there's a production tax credit, federal government tax credit that gives a 30% tax rebate to the investor. So what it does is allows us to buy it in five years at a much reduced price. And so that, taking into consideration, along with the low cost of the unit itself, it's a much more cost-effective unit than either of the combustion turbines. It runs 24/7, seven days a week, at a 20-year cost that's lower than the combustion turbine.
And I believe that amount was $600,000?
Right.
Any other guests?
Before I lose my train of thought, I, it just doesn't look good that you rushed in and the information wasn't out there to tell the folks, we're not rushing, we have to do it this quick.
We didn't do it quick. It was a three-year process.
Yeah, and, but it looked hurried to the public. And it looks kind of mean more than substance sometimes. So I know that in Wisconsin, their biodigesters, they're by their waste facilities, their wastewater treatment plants, and they're on top of their landfills. And we put ours in the middle of town, and then I see this sign that says poisonous gas, and my four-year-old granddaughter is going to school 75 yards to the north, along with 100 other, 200, 300 other little people. And that's why I was concerned.
No, I understand, and I'd be concerned too. There is a, again, as you know, we don't own it or operate it.
Yes.
And at this point, there's discussions going on between the owner and the operator. And I believe that's employed by the operator to get the attention of the owner. But I can tell you with certainty that I've seen the OSHA reports, and there are no poisonous gases in the facility.
So there's an underlying reason for that sign, okay? Yeah, it seems like everything's kind of conspiring against you in the biodigester area. Thank you for talking about that, too. I appreciate that.
Any other discussion?
Any issue as far as fuel goes, being, I believe you told us you were at the end of consumers' line there? So we're putting in a generator that cannot fuel to capacity, is that correct?
No, it can fuel to capacity in the months of May through September, which is what it was designed for.
Mr. Hobbie, have something you want to add?
Just a couple of things. One was a question relating to the return on investment pro forma. Where's the savings? Where's that, I think you can elaborate on that a little bit. Where's the savings generated?
Steve can give you the detail on that, but there's savings in number of trucks that have to go out to answer calls, the number of trucks that have to go out for shut-offs, the number of calls that we have to answer, and wear tear on those trucks. And there's a number of other items that you want to.
You're talking about the AMI?
Yes.
Yeah.
We switch. In the value assessment that was done, it does show that we would have reoccurring annual savings with an AMI project of roughly $170,000. That would mainly, there are a few areas, some of the high-level areas are in meter reading. The need for meter readers and the need for our own staff to spend time performing rereads, variance checks, when a customer moves in and out, going to actually get that read. There would be, the meters are much more accurate. They estimate that we'd have $31,000 to $32,000 more billed per year because of the accuracy of the meters. There would be a reduction in line losses. There's the ability to us to identify power theft. The replacement of equipment would be less because we wouldn't be using our equipment. So there are, I have a five-page report of the savings that if you guys would like to go over that and sit down with me, I'd be more than happy to.
You said reduction in waste. Now, Greg, you said too, with changing the lines over to the thicker gauge. So with this too, there's going to be even less loss with the smart meters?
Yes.
And then just one question. The actual meters that we have now, is there really anything wrong with them?
Well, a lot of them are mechanical, so they slow down over time, so they're less accurate. They're old.
A lot of the meters out there are 20, 25 years old.
If not older.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Can the citizens expect with a new meter, a higher rate because of this? Because in the mind, it says, okay, my meter's running slow, I'm paying less for it, and now the meters are going to be more accurate, and I'm going to pay.
There is a chance that bills could go up. And that's just a reflection of now they're actually being billed what they should have been billed in the past.
Yeah.
So again, that would be an educational tool that we'd have to let people know about.
As long as the expectation is known and the possibility is known.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But in terms of this project, there's not going to be any cost. In terms of this project, there's no cost passed on to the customer to do this implementation.
Sure, but it comes back to the 2027 payoff of that big $3 million loan. I know it was way ahead of your time before you got here, but it was a great idea to put it there. So the previous management did a great job, because now we can handle liars and we can handle developments out in that area. So ultimately, it comes down to, can we eventually start giving some relief to the electricity, the businesses and the homeowners of their rates, once we get things paid off?
AMI would be a huge benefit for commercial customers. They would be able to see their usage and demand in 15-minute increments. Large commercial customers have a demand component on their bill for their peak KW or kilowatts in a month. I have talked personally with a few businesses, they're like, how can I reduce this peak demand? If I can reduce my peak demand, I can lower my bill. Right now, we read the meter once a month, we know what the peak demand was sometime in that 30-day period. This AMI meter would allow them to monitor their demand, change their load, move operations around to shave that peak, which would not only reduce their bill, it would reduce the power that we would have to buy at our peak, so we would also be saving money. That's just a little more of the complex side of the AMI.
Makes sense.
Anyone else? Jim, he's first.
If you, there's a five-page savings, trucks, labor, man-hours, stuff like that. What part of that is passed on to the ratepayer? Because I'm hearing about, like, power-saving money. I'm hearing that the accuracies may cause people's bills to go up. I haven't heard one thing about how, right now, we're going to save the ratepayer money. As power costs go up, those would have to be passed on to customers. It's our hope that operational costs. It's our hope that operational costs can allow us to absorb future power cost increases. So those would have to be passed on. If that makes sense. If we're able to save $200,000, being a 150 or 170 in operations and power costs go up 170, that power cost could be offset by what we just saved in operations. So there wouldn't be that increase for the power cost.
And so there would be a balance to prevent an increase, but nothing done to create a decrease.
We do have, and this is a whole different topic, a power cost adjustment in our rate. And there is the ability to lower that and give people money back in their bill. Unfortunately, we have absorbed, don't hold it to this exact number, over $1 million in power costs since 2010 that we haven't passed on through the PCA through savings and operations. And the hope would be that we could keep not passing on these increases in power to the customer. That's a whole different topic for a different day.
If in fact, there, I mean, again, we keep very close track of all of this. And if there is a point in time when we do have money to pass back to the customer, by all means, we're more than happy to do that. Right now, we're doing everything we can to keep operational costs down to absorb and be able to not have to pass on all the power costs.
Other discussions?
Just for the council members, if I may?
Yes.
To help you out a little bit, it's not, the budget is never actually, anything that comes before you is never all or nothing. And you have options if you want to see this move forward or you want to see this move forward in some form. You could approve a budget of a lesser amount. If you have concerns about a specific project, you could approve a budget that would not include that certain project until maybe further questions could be answered for you. So just to get you thinking a little bit, you, it's not all or nothing. And there are several things that Light and Power has already been investing in and some projects that already have moved forward in previous fiscal years that they want to continue. And so adopting a budget minimum that at least allows for some capital projects to move forward would at least be prudent in terms of allowing them to continue to move forward. But still, respect that you may have some additional questions or some issues that you still want to have on the floor. So by the way, you have options.
Let me supplement that by saying that procedurally, as Alan pointed out, we're mid-year on this. This budget is effective July 1st, ends June 30th. Light and Power is charged with charter wording that says that they will present a budget to us in March to the city manager, which is shared with us at some point. So that opportunity will again be coming to us shortly. But again, respecting and following what Alan has to say here that said, we've got some projects that are already in the works. The previous council, which I was a part of, did approve their basic budget. This part was left out, missed. And to help Light and Power finish and move on with the projects that they currently have going, this would be a good thing to, at least at this time, not to nip, but rather to proceed. And we'll have an opportunity in March, April to have further discussion with Light and Power. And Steve and Greg are always available for your questions, concerns, stop in the office, see what's going on and ask your questions because it's good to be informed. So any other discussion?
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with Alan about the generators, but not the smart meters. I, because if we approve that, that's approving it basically for three years in a month. And I would not have any problem approving the rest of the turbine and the generation part, but I would like a little more information on the smart meters and the savings. It just seems like way too much to hit this time. And if it, if it, it's not my fault that they forgot to put it in, but you're asking us to do a lot of research on smart meters and basically rely on you guys for all the, all the information. And I'm still having a little bit of problem with the biodigester because you said that you weren't going to spend any of our money on the biodigester project. And you have. And so, and the biodigester project is a really good project, but I just need a little bit more time to think about the smart meters.
Let me just ask, is the smart meters any part of this capital budget? Is being proposed?
It is.
And how much?
$175,000.
All right, thank you.
Can we do, as Mark suggested, table the smart meters till the next meeting? And that's going to be a unique meeting because we're going to be doing some work electing the mayor and mayor pro temp and all kinds of stuff. But we would love to have the opportunity, not only to hear you guys explain more about those smart meters, but to have some citizen comments because we have a really smart citizen right here, people who can do a lot, lot better research than I know I can. But anyway, I'd like to hear from the citizens a little bit, give them the opportunity to come up after they've had a couple of weeks to digest it and come in. Is it two weeks or three weeks away, the next council meeting?
It would be two weeks.
Okay.
Let me just point out that, not to argue with you, but that's why we have five people that sit on the Light and Power board. These folks are, I won't say natural ordinary dummies because they're not, and I don't mean any, there's a time to be cute and maybe a time not to be. But these are five very good people and they have looked into it. They're hearing the stories and getting the, getting the research. But those meetings are also open to the public. They're held the second Thursday of the month, just like clockwork, at 6:00 PM. And so if you'd care to go to those meetings, you can also get information there. And/or, once again, a phone call to 897-8402. We'll hook you to Mr. Pierce.
And you can watch those meetings on YouTube, which I have done for the last two days. And I've only gotten about 40 minutes into the first half of the meeting. It's, there's just so much there. I'm running a spreadsheet, trying to figure out what you guys are saying and what I'm calculating. And wow, but, yeah.
I would like to point out that with AMI technology, we would be in a way on the forefront and a way not our competitor. I mean, we do have a monopoly. The Consumers Energy is installing, has installed AMI meters throughout the state. And tens and tens of millions of AMI meters have been installed in North America. I mean, Toronto, Sacramento, even small little communities. I know two municipals that are part of the MMEA and MPPA are going forward with AMI projects. So there are tens of millions of meters out there and including meters installed by investor-owned utilities, which they're there to make money and, you know, pay back. You know, they want to make a profit and they wouldn't be putting these in without money. So just something to think about as well.
My research said that the smart meters put out maybe half of the amount that a Wi-Fi signal puts out and about a third or 25% of what a cell phone puts out. The only argument I have with that is my daughter is a Consumers Energy customer. They came to her house and put that meter in without her knowledge. And it was forced on her. And people like to have choices. And I choose to have Wi-Fi in my home and I choose to have a cell phone in my pocket. And if I didn't choose, you know, in her, in her case, she didn't choose to have that RF signal being spread around, even though it is a light signal. People like choice. And if you show them the advantages of that choice, I mean, if you're a T-Mobile customer and you can go to Verizon and save money, I'm not getting paid for this. But if you can save money, you're going to move. And that, you make a logical choice based on the information you're being fed. And I think right now we have a lack of information that allows people to make a decision that they think is proper.
Any other concerns?
Well, I would agree with Alan. I think there is an extreme lack of education from Light and Power on your projects, why you're doing them, how it's going to benefit the people that buy your product. And it's a three-year plan and nothing has been, I mean, we've done nothing to educate the customers. They're going to get an opt-out clause and we've done nothing to educate them on what they're opting out of or opting into.
Well, we indicated to you that we would be doing an education plan as part of the program. And before we started educating them on what they may be receiving, what they have the option to receive, we needed to do all of our work and get an approval from our board to even move forward with the project. Because what's the point in telling them that they're going to have this opportunity if they end up not having the opportunity? So it's kind of like you put the cart before the horse and the horse before the cart. And so as Steve mentioned, we do plan on having an education program, whether it's through mailers or town hall meetings or having classes, whatever we need to do to get everybody informed. We have a pretty long lead time before this project's actually implemented.
Well, we're looking at the $170,000 for the smart meters now with no plan in place at all to educate people. So it's not really cart before the horse. We're trying to go forward with the president.
Just because it's approved doesn't mean, doesn't say anything about what our timing is. This was supposedly approved last June by the council and we're not yet ready to start it with a patient.
When would you start the project? When the first, you know, initial, we're going to start this?
When would we start?
Installing the smart meters?
Installing, it would be, let me say, sometime in May?
Spring.
So we've got five months of education that we have, that we're working on.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Alan? Looks like you got a question.
I missed that one.
All right. We've got a motion and a second towards approving the capital budget. Do you want to amend your motion at all or you're good with it?
I'm not clear that we've had enough discussion. I, I feel that we might end up with a vote that's very split. But I don't want that vote to be split without justification. My inclination is to honor what the council approved before. And I'd like to hear an argument against that. So therefore, I don't, I don't want to amend my motion.
All right, we have motion on the floor. And a second, call for the vote at this time and we can proceed from there. But all those in favor of the motion to adopt the capital budget as presented, vote as saying yes. I'll say yes.
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 And those who choose to vote no?
No.
Passes 3-2. Thank you very much. Moving on then to new business. Item seven, snowfloring agreement for the airport. Mr. Hau.
Thank you. As I reported to you earlier, the fixed base operator at the airport, William Airpower, will be leaving as of April of 2016. The airport board has obtained bids for Smith Prime Airport during the upcoming winter months and they've recommended approval of the attached green and scenic expressions. The agreement is for the entire winter season this year and will be a total of $7,500.
All right. Any questions, concerns about snowfloring the airport? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
In a second.
All right, we move to second to approve the motion. Snowfloring agreement between City Lowell and Seenic Expressions LLC. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any votes?
Five zero.
Okay. Moving on then to monthly reports. Item eight, all kinds of reports there from all of our departments. Any questions or concerns there? We've got time to digest all those numbers. Seeing none, then we'll move on to item nine, council comments. And Mr. DeBoer, you have the floor.
I don't have any.
All right, thank you. Mr. DeLance.
I just want to thank the council. I, this is a tough decision and kind of a little bit of a battle. But when we're done with our assignment and our turn here, I would hope that the next council would honor our decisions and the contracts that we enter into. But if you disagree, I'd love to talk. And I just appreciate the discussion because I think this was a good discussion. And it showed the people how much people, we care and how much we want to serve them.
Thank you.
I'd just like to wish everybody happy holidays and enjoy your time off and enjoy being with your families.
Thank you. Mr. Alton.
And I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas too and a Happy New Year.
All right. Thank you. And I really have no comments tonight. So Mr. Hau, you're up for your manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. You requested more information in your previous meeting to clarify the city's responsibilities relating to housing. You have a one-page memo from me with a pretty extensive packet. And I'm just going to briefly go over what that contains. And if anybody who's listening or anybody in the audience is interested in this information, you certainly can make that available to them. First, it's important to tell you that housing is a very, very broad issue. And what I've tried to do is sort of paint a very, very broad brush stroke to give you some idea of some of the issues we're facing for housing. Construction is typically regulated through a code that is adopted at the state and local level. The state adopts the state construction code and then at the local level, you've adopted that through a city ordinance. In addition, the city has adopted a property maintenance code. And so there's a section in your packet where it shows that the property maintenance code has been adopted. Also, there's a, just a sheet from the Department of Licensing and Regulation website that gives you a sample of, just the titles, of all of the state acts that are in place that regulate housing, construction, those kinds of things. And so that'll give you a pretty, pretty big list of state acts that are out there. In addition, our zoning ordinance impacts housing. And it, you know, for example, it limits where certain housing can occur that be single-family, two-family, multiple-family or manufactured housing. So the zoning ordinance plays some role in that. It's, I think, I made a couple of notes. It's important that you know that multiple-family housing is not allowed in the R1 district. It's allowed as a special use in the R2 district and is used by right near R3 districts. So multiple-family housing is treated very differently throughout various districts within the ordinance. And also, on manufactured home park districts or manufactured homes when they're located in a park, there is also the Mobile Home Commission Act. And there are several state acts that we have to apply as well when we're looking at mobile home parks. Our nuisance ordinance provides some regulation relating to general conditions in the city of housing and other types of things. But the nuisance ordinance is in your packet as well. And then other communities have adopted a specific code relating to rental properties. The city of Lowell has not done that. The city of Essexville, I sent an email out to the city manager and just said, you know, has anybody done any of this recently or any of this work recently? The city of Essexville recently spent a great deal of time, so I included a copy of their rental code ordinance as well in the packet. Again, this was just meant to give you sort of a broad overview. I hope it at least answers the broad questions that you had. And if you have anything specific that you'd like us to research or specific questions, feel free to let me know either now or at some point in the future for us to discuss it in more detail. The, Suzy, if you could switch over to my screen, please. More than a year ago, we made the decision to take down the old maple tree in front... of the library. And at the time that we took it down, it was a very difficult decision. We had a lot of discussion with council, the urban board, friends of the library, because the tree, half of it was really pretty good and pretty good shape, and the other half barely had any leaves on it. And it was, it was really, you know, you could tell it was dying. And we had a discussion with the arborist, and the arborist told us that it might have five years of life left, but, you know, really not much beyond that. It really is toward the end of its life. And so we decided to take it down. When we did take it down, we hired a contractor to do it, but as they're cutting the limbs off and the limbs are dropping to the ground, they burst open because they were hobbled onside and ants were crawling out of the limbs and so, and part of it was a safety concern as well. So at the time that we took it down, I said, let's save whatever we can out of it. If there's a portion of the log that we can save, let's save it. If there's a larger limb, let's save it. Perhaps we can do something in the future. Didn't really know what that was going to be, but I was just hopeful that something could be done. About a year after that, local artist Jeff Lundy came to us to say, whatever happened to that maple tree? And because I was told that it was turned into firewood. And I said, well, as a matter of fact, no, it wasn't, and we do have a portion of it. He was pretty excited about it. And so he put together a team consisting of Tony Ellis at the high school, who teaches woodworking class at high school, and worked with us, worked with our DPW. We had to, had to use a chainsaw to cut it in half in order to run it through a mill. You get logs cut out of it, so we got, or I'm sorry, boards cut out of it. We got some boards cut out of it, got them up to the high school, got them dried, and that has resulted, the first project has resulted in a table. The picture doesn't do it justice, but the table kind of looks like the state of Michigan. And there's some metal work on the bottom with the legs that one of the students at the high school did as well. And that table is going to be delivered to the library and the works at the high school will get cleaned and disneyed at the library. So a great, great story, great, great thing when the community comes together and the people come together and are able to take the disappointing part of taking a tree out of the city of Lowell, because we are a free city USA and we take trees very seriously, but to make something good out of it. And so congratulations to the students there who were about to just do a wonderful project. And once it's at the library, I'll let you know. Please feel free to visit there and let us know what you think about the new table. Your next meeting will be the annual organizational meeting. During that time, you'll be reviewing and adopting your rules of procedure. Your rules of procedure really set how the council operates and how you conduct your business as a public body. And I would highly suggest that you spend some time looking at the rules of procedure between now and your organizational meeting. I planned at your organizational meeting to help you walk through section by section the rules of procedure so that if you've got, you know, certain things that you want to make some changes to or update or whatever that might be, then we'll go through it very deliberately and have, we'll have an opportunity to talk about that as a council. But I highly suggest that you look at those rules of procedure between now and your organizational meeting. The other thing that you'll have at your organizational meeting, I put together this memo that I set out at your places tonight. There will be a number of appointments that you'll make for council members to either serve as a liaison or serve as an actual member to a board or committee. I've tried to lay out some of the background on those boards and commissions because they're all different. Every board and commission was created either through a local ordinance or through state law or through intergovernmental agreements, so everything was created differently. The appointments are different. Some require council members, some don't. Some are for specific terms and some of them are for a term that coexists with the council member's term. And so every one of the boards and commissions is different. And I tried to lay out some of that basic information in this memo. So if you have any questions on that before your organizational meeting, please feel free to give me a call or send me an email. I'd be glad to make sure that you're prepared for those appointments as they come up. And other than that, I just want to say best wishes to you and your families and everybody watching, everybody in the audience for a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. There are no current board appointments. Another event, Patty Seltzer, I understand, has chosen to step down from the LCTV and DOD board, so there will be an opening coming up in the near future there. But our sheet, I think, is leftover from the last meeting. We do have a mayor pro tem, we do have a fire authority representative. So with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you. And move to second to adjourn. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.